Welcome, folks. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of Wednesday, January 24th. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Thanks for coming out on what seems to be yet another rainy evening here in the Hudson Valley. Miranda from Panda, welcome.
Hello.
If you would be kind enough to pan, no pun intended, over to the big screen to show the folks at home what we'll be discussing tonight. We have just a couple of announcements. We have a quick update on our work in the Forest Park development area as it relates to drainage. And Ryan Morrison from Tyon Bond is here with us this evening. We're going to finalize legislative platform issues related to the Association of Towns' annual conference next month. We're doing our annual reorg, which we continue to do for the first few meetings of the month, sorry, of the year. Tradition Development Phase Number Eight. We are going to entertain authorizing the filing of that phase. Then we'll have, it's the second meeting of the month, so we'll have our department board and committee reports. And then also looking at a task order to develop a 3D scan for architectural purposes of the St. Margaret's building. A few announcements this evening. Historic Red Hook would like to let you know that this weekend, on Saturday, they're having soup night. It's a good night for soup tonight. Seatings at 5:30 and 6:30. And they also have cake options. Red Hook Education Foundation is doing yet another dinner and a movie. It's the second annual event, also this Saturday at 3:00 p.m. Bring the whole family and join your friends at the Performing Arts Center. And here are the participating. Can you blow that up? Well, I can also blow it out. There we go, blow that up. Participating restaurants. And that's for dinner and a movie. All proceeds benefit the Red Hook Education Foundation program. Once again, for the 37th consecutive year, the Town of Red Hook Conservation Advisory Council seeking applicants for two scholarships for one week of sleepaway camp at New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Education Summer Camp. The scholarships are sponsored, once again, by Red Hook BFW Post 7765 and the Hendrick Hudson Masonic Lodge. You must be, applicants must be Town of Red Hook residents and/or attend the school in the school district. Scholarship applications will be available beginning January 22nd at the town website. And the camp is sponsored and staffed by New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And there's more information, the deadline March 8. And we look forward to getting some applications. Here is the application itself. Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, in collaboration with WMC, has several dates for 2024 mental health training opportunities. In there, gives the location. It's monthly from February through May, and then also dates in July and October. Again, all of this is available on the town websites. This would be a good time for me to remind you. Please sign up for notifications. And this way, you'll be kept up to date on everything that's being considered here at Town Hall. Okay, very good. So that's what I have for announcements. Anybody else have any? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any public comments before we start on the agenda? Linda?
Linda Young, Peachy Lane, Red Hook. I went over your committees. And when I discovered there are 24 committees or boards, 17 are without secretaries, that's nearly three quarters. Seven have no chairs, that's a third. And seven need many updates, a third. The St. Margaret's Committee is still languering, and I would like to get on that committee and have other people working on it. You aren't doing a 3D rendering of the building? She probably needs more information, I can give her background. So, let's get going. We increased your salary 100%, so do your work.
Thank you. Other comments? Frank, would you like?
As the news has said, we're in presidential campaign season now with Iowa and New Hampshire. And I'm sure many people are interested in what will happen in 2024. I had sent a letter to the Town Board on January 12th seeking to have an informational meeting for the Robert F. Kennedy Jr. presidential campaign. I noted in the letter that just a few years ago, our town supervisor was nominated at a meeting held in Red Hook Village Law. So I think this is a good American tradition to provide information to people about candidates. And I hope the town will provide a time when we can meet. And I'll be happy to discuss with whoever is the appropriate person to do that.
Thank you, Frank. Somebody should have been in touch with you already. This is the People's Building. You're welcome to reserve it for those types of purposes. If you just want to get with maybe my secretary and shook wardmate with Deanna, the town clerk, and we'll go over the calendar. Yes, that's very possible to use the building for those purposes. Okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to? Any public comments?
Okay.
Why don't we jump in then? First item on the agenda, we have an update on the Forest Park drainage situation. And we have Ryan Morrison from Tyon Bond with us. And Ryan, we've had lots of maps, lots of pictures, lots of analysis, preliminary, obviously, potential design. But I thought maybe it would be good if we could roll back the videotape and just have a quick sort of recap. We may have people that moved into the Forest Park neighborhood in the last couple of years who may be not up to speed or didn't receive our mailings. And so it'd be a good time to maybe recap on that.
Sure.
Okay.
To kind of recap where we started in Forest Park, I believe in, forgive me, in years, either late 2021 or early 22, 2022, we did a community-wide survey through the Forest Park community where we asked different residents about what flooding conditions they may have, where those flooding conditions were occurring, if it infected their basement, if it was their yard, if anybody was losing first floors of their houses. We compiled that data. At the same time, we did an inventory assessment of Forest Park drainage system, noting pipe sizes, where catch basin locations were, what the condition of catch basins were, what outfalls looked like, and where stormwater went to. We also did what we call an H&amp;H study, which is a hydrologic and hydraulic study of the drainage system to kind of figure out what the capacities of different pipes were and if we had any undersized drainage pipes. In general, what we found out in that initial study was that we had some capacity issues in pipe sizes. But for the most part, what our issue was, was stormwater collection. Where stormwater gets picked up to the system, we have minimal amount of catch basins out in Forest Park. And Forest Park is relatively a flat development. So stormwater is having a hard time finding its way into the stormwater system so it can be conveyed out of the community. We did find pipes that didn't meet 10-year storm volumes or 25-year storm volumes. But, you know, we were also not collecting the two-year storm because we just couldn't pick it up some places. After that study in 2022, late 2022 through 2023, we did an alternatives analysis for the community, looking at different ways we could solve the drainage issues in the community. One of the ways we looked at was installing swales within the community. The other way we looked at was adding catch basins to the community. The catch basins were a more expensive option, but tended to be more favored by community members, while the swale option was a cheaper option, but would take more of that roadway width area and had some complexities with hot work, with folks' driveway, or other improvements that were in people's lawns. We had presented those two options to the board, I think, in September of this year. It wasn't all that long ago. And then we had decided to kind of put a halt on design at that time as we waited for grant information to come back. While we were doing the design alternatives analysis, we had submitted to a grant through CFAs, the DEC for Climate Smart Communities. I think it was for $187,000, which basically, we were going to split it with the state, where the town would pay $187,000 and DEC would kick in $187,000 as Robert has them. Or tonight, as of January, we learned that the town did not receive that grant funding. So now we're kind of in the process of trying to find the next grant opportunity for funding of stormwater. Unfortunately, stormwater is kind of a tough one. There's a ton of money out there right now for water and wastewater. Stormwater is just not a well-funded piece of our infrastructure currently. Other options that we're looking at out there are some options through FEMA. So there's a BRIC grant, which is building resilient infrastructure in communities. And then there's FEMA, which is, or FMA grant, which is flood mitigation action. Both those grants have a lot bigger pools of money. Unfortunately, there's a lot more competition for those grants. And so that's kind of why we didn't prioritize those last year. But now that we've learned we've not won the climate storm communities, we're going to look into that and see if that's an option for us to kind of help pursue funding for these drainage improvements.
And important also, just to remind folks that we're able to pursue these efforts as they relate specifically to the flooding and its impact on the roadways. We're not allowed to expend taxpayer funds in making improvements to private properties that may be experiencing drainage or flooding issues. For example, back on December 18th, we received a report from the Highway Superintendent. Yet another one of those extreme weather events, lots of rain. I think we had 4.7 inches or something.
Those are decent sized rainstorms. It was over a short period of time, too.
All of which, by the way, was predicted by these climate change and flood risk studies that we had conducted here in Red Hook back in 2017, 2018. Does that sound right? I got the years right. These December, January rainstorms in lieu of what we were used to, which is the snowstorms. Back on the 18th, just to give folks an example, because you may be, you know, with your home experiencing in your front or backyard some standing water flooding issues. It's not unique to either Red Hook or to the Hudson Valley. It's a widespread growing issue, obviously. When you have saturated grounds, saturated soils, you have it in more of a residential subdivision. You have smaller lots, you know. We had on the 18th, according to our Highway Superintendent, we had flooded roads. Enndale Triangle, Guskey, Norton, Rookabye, Sangstack, Station Hill Road, Stone Church Road, Stony Brook Road, West Bart Avenue. Aspen Mall. Yeah, well, we had the bridge there, which we had to inspect. It was so flooded from the Salt Hill. Those were the roads that were able to be left open, at least on some level. The following roads were flooded and deemed hazardous, so they were closed. That was Echo Valley, Kelly Road, Middle Road, and Moore Road. And as Ryan mentioned, the Aspen Mall Road at number 55 flooded during the night as the level of the Salt Hill Road. And so we had to close that bridge, inspected. Couple days into it, we were to reopen it. In fact, we'll be looking now at what type of work needs to be done as a result of the flooding. The reason I bring it up is because it's not unique. The challenges we have are that the stormwater management infrastructure that's been placed throughout our country, you know, certainly here in the Hudson Valley, is substandard. It was all done by developers, you know, with guidelines in mind that weren't necessarily forward-thinking or, you know, anticipating and certainly not capable of handling the type of weather events that we're now experiencing. So if we were to retrofit really every community or roadway with different stormwater infrastructure, we're looking at hundreds of millions of dollars just in the Town of Red Hook alone. So we are and will continue to do work as far as trying to get grants to accomplish this. We're committed to keeping the water off the roadways. It freezes, it becomes a hazard. And that's really how we're able to move forward with efforts like this. Anything more on that? We can follow up once we have identified a suitable program, again, to apply for.
Yeah, as things come back up, we'll identify new programs and present them back to the board. Just kind of to clarify, we kind of put the design on hold pending grant funds until we figure out which way we're going to go so that we don't design a project that we can't get funded, right?
Right.
So we'll just hold on that until the time comes.
Right.
So for this grant, I see that the letter sort of cites that the proposal scored below the minimum required for an award. Do you have a sense of what that was? Is this a scale of the project?
Usually, we'll try to follow back up. Right now, it just came out a couple of days ago. So we'll make a phone call along the way and see if we can't figure out why it scored and if we can make a better application because something we left out or something that we know exists, we didn't report on. Anyway, we'll try and make an effort to see if we can improve that because this was kind of the grant opportunity that fit the project pretty well. And so certainly, we'll go down that path. It's just, you know, everyone else got the letters at the same time, so I'm sure their phones are quite busy.
Thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
So separate and apart from that, the county is updating its Hazard Mitigation Plan. Each municipality does what's called an annex to that plan. They're looking for input from residents in every community to help them identify where they've experienced flooding. We've experienced flooding in so many locations in Red Hook, but there'll be a questionnaire, a very brief one, coming out from my office that will help gather that information so we can send it off to the county to process and they can put it as far as their plan. Go ahead, Ryan.
And having that information in the Hazard Mitigation Plan is crucial for funding for the BRIC grants and the FMA grants. They look there to see if it's already a part of that approved plan and then also that you already have done a basic study in place. So having the studies that have done in the previous two phases and then having that information as part of your annex for the Hazard Mitigation Plan kind of help you in those applications. We're just not sure the scale fits right. It's kind of in those in-between scales where it's too, it's not small enough for the town to take on on their own, but it's not that $10 million, I need a whole stormwater system in a village or something like that. So we're just going to find the right spot for it.
Okay.
Question?
Sure. While we have you here, Ryan, would you be kind enough to answer a few questions if we have some folks?
Yeah.
Right. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Dee Sullivan. I just moved to Ryan Beck. I purchased a house on Overlook Drive. There are four houses that are a little bit higher than mine. One is kind of high, and then it trickles down. And I get all of the water. And it goes through my backyard, and it's a stream. I mean, it's really big. And then I've got the forest next door. And so it's bad, really bad, a lot of water. And are, well, dear, will you be going to homeowners to find out what the drainage problem is and how they can, or what they can do to make things better? For instance, the house that's the highest, he probably needs to do some type of a drainage solution so that the water goes to the drain on the street. And then the second house probably needs to do the same. And the third house. And I've put down, I've gotten blocks, big blocks, and I put them where all the water is coming into my backyard. I put a row of blocks, but the water is still coming through. It's, the road, the ground is saturated, so the water's going underneath the blocks. And it, but I, we need to do something because I'm afraid that my house is going to slide into the forest, you know, because the foundation and just everything is.
Sure. I don't know if Ryan's about to say this, but we actually did survey every resident in Forest Park. It must have been just before you purchased.
Well, yes, I do. I just moved in the middle of February.
So I think we would appreciate getting that information. We'll exchange contact, and then Ryan can match it up with what he already received from the previous owner of the house on that.
The house was vacant, so I don't know.
Oh, was it? Okay, so that's very helpful then. Great.
Yeah, we can get that information. And then, you know, certainly, I'll go out to the house at some point during the rainstorm, and I'll pay attention from the street on how the street and the house are interacting. As Robert had mentioned previously, we're trying to focus, or we have to focus this analysis on how the road and the houses interact.
The drainage on the street is very good. There was, there's no flooding on the street or in the neighborhood that, you know, several streets around. No drainage problem. It's just because of the houses are at different levels.
It's the interaction between the houses.
That's the challenge for us, Dee, because if it's about improving or changing where the stormwater goes for residential, you know, for one residence to another, for example, that's not something that we are legally allowed to be involved with and to use taxpayer funds.
You can't even give recommendations as to how it can be solved?
Yeah, yeah, we can't. And in fact, it's a bit of, it's more than a legal quagmire because you can imagine, take it to the next step, that, you know, we inappropriately use taxpayer funds to advise a landowner how to modify their property so that water went to a different location. I mean, I think you can extend that out to see how we would not only start with one problem of what we're not allowed to do, but we perhaps create an even greater problem, the law of entropy. Yeah. Behind you, Frank. She was first, and then, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Robert. Karen Levant. I live nearby. And you talked about the survey. How are you going to make people aware of that so that you get participation from many people?
So we'll, once again, send it out through our notification system to remind folks, and this is why we've done probably five mailings in the last three years, and recommend that everybody sign up for notifications. It's the quick and easy, efficient way that we can let you know about everything that's going on in town.
Do you have that as a poster to put up in a community area?
We will make posters. That's a good idea. We'll do posters for that. We also, I just noticed that the postal system is starting a really affordable way to hit every address with a one-pager, which would be good because we do twice-annual mailings with sort of updates and events and all that stuff. And it sounds like they have a much more affordable way to do that. So we might consider including that in our spring mailing.
Well, I'm just saying that because, you know, I get all the alerts, and then there's the problem of filtering through them to find that one about the flooding. So for that one, which seems quite important and something that a lot of people would want to participate in, that one, you might want to have more like out there as a poster.
We'll put that with a red headline. Okay. Just more questions for Ryan?
I want to clarify one thing. We've already completed the survey as of 2022. So if there's folks that aren't captured in that survey for Forest Park?
Well, he mentioned.
Well, I'm talking about more than just Forest Park. I'm talking about for other communities.
I wasn't sure.
Robert had mentioned his survey for the county.
Got it.
That's right.
That's what I was talking about.
All in our communities, yeah. Yep. Ryan, did you have a question for?
Just a comment to add to what the qualification is. Our neighbor had to repair a place's roof and set up the drainage so that it went onto our property. I consulted my attorney, and he said that's, you can't do that. And I explained that to the construction folks. They found a way, we routed up to the road. So that's just your information.
Thank you.
More questions?
I live in Forest Park, Austin, Edgewood Drive. And my issue is the water at the end of my driveway. Right in on it, where my driveway meets it. We had it paved many years ago. And it seems like every couple of years, I have to repair the end with new asphalt because all the water sits there, right in the, you know how the road's crowned?
Yep.
And my driveway is just sloping down just enough, and it sits there.
It's a low point where you're.
Sometimes it's seven feet wide, coming up my driveway, four feet, you know, the road, three or four feet on the edge. It never goes past that. So all that, mainly it's my driveway that breaks up. I guess the roads are thicker or have a better base. So all that several feet of my end for the width is just awful, so bad. Every few years.
Okay.
And I have had it repaired a few times, and we're at a point where, you know, we wanted to paint it last year again, but I know it's just going to break up in three years.
It's a hard expense to keep, yeah.
Because the water sits there, and then the freeze-and-thaw cycle just eats it up.
Yep. If you wouldn't mind, I want to ask you to do it publicly. I'd just like you to share an address with me after I take comments from everybody.
16.
16, okay. I just want to make sure we're being captured or we at least have a note in the plan so that we make sure we take care of it.
And neighbors to the right and left, you can see I apparently am perfectly leveled left and right. And the edge wood just slightly heads down towards the, you know, the cul-de-sac. So it sits with me whole front for 40 feet long.
Okay. Appreciate you sharing it so we can try and capture it.
I was thinking if a catch basin could be near my driveway and then connected, there's a drain a couple houses down. And then head towards the wells.
I just want to make, using your address, I'll try and figure it out from there.
And if it can be headed towards the wells, then there's water accumulates there all the time.
As part of the, one of the proposed improvements for, I believe that's for Shady Lane, we're doing some drainage work or we propose some potential drainage work on Edgewood. So hopefully, we can capture it in there somewhere and take it there.
I put a trench for now. I actually feed it into my front yard to save my driveway, which can't be good for my central coverage.
Do you have any idea when they would start to maybe work on it? Or should we wait to do our track plays with them?
As you've been, as you heard today, we don't, we didn't get awarded the grant. The grant process is very long and tenuous, and Robert can attest to how long some of these take. So by the time we pursue another grant and would get to construction funding, it's not a this-year thing or a next-year thing. It's probably a few years out before we're making substantial improvements. It doesn't mean we can't make small improvements along the way, but any type of substantial improvement to drainage in the area is not a assumed project. Yeah.
We could ask the Highway Super to come out and.
I'd like to look at this one first, and maybe there's a small project here rather than the larger projects we've been looking at.
Yeah, that's standing water along the edge of the road. Okay. Any more questions as it rains once again outside on already saturated soil types? Okay. Ryan, thank you very much. Appreciate your coming. While you're here, Ryan, should we maybe skip around? You want to talk about 3D scans?
Sure.
You do? You do?
I mean, if you'd like me to.
Okay, as we continue to work towards making St. Margaret's a safe place where folks can go in and work and we can make it accessible. We have a couple of grants as it relates to accessibility, both on the inside and the outside. It would behoove us to, while we were gifted the building from Hanaford many years ago and it's that idle or mostly idle, there was some structural work on the outside conducted. It would behoove us to get some plans developed so that they are ready when we do some interior work, any alterations to the building. And so recommended by Time Bond that we consider getting a 3D scan, which will help us produce the drawings and capture and create a model for use. So Ryan, did you wanna say anything about this before we go ahead and entertain authorizing it?
I, I think you, you did that fairly decently. I guess I would say, you know, this 3D modeling provides all types of advantages for designers who are gonna work on the project. It literally takes millions of points along the interior and exterior of the building as, as mapping grout lines between brick and molding details and puts it all into a 3D image where you can actually walk around the structure as if you're actually in it. And then the architects now can bring that into a drawing and design off of it. So it's super helpful for them. It's super helpful from a shippo aspect when we're trying to do restoration projects and explaining to shippo what the conditions of window, window trim are with this being a historical building. It, it, we're gonna have to do that and we're having a discussion about windows right now. And just being able to map things out like that, it's gonna be super helpful for them. We've previously in the past sent them photos of the, of the windows, but it's hard to relate which windows where and what condition that's in. So being, having a building you can walk around provides a ton of detail. Also, we had recently had one of our architects out on, some landscape architects out on site, trying to work through what ADA access would look like in a couple of spots. Because the building is quite difficult. It's, it's got weird door heights and really high thresholds that are all counterintuitive to ADA access. And picking up some of those minute details, you know, not by a tape measure in one spot, but spot, but by knowing what it looks like across the entire floor from hall to hall and step to step is super helpful for us to kind of understand access and how to make it as accessible as possible. So with that being said, you know, for us, it's, it's easy and it's a heck of a lot easier than us sending, you know, multiple architects out there for days, kind of measuring walls. And it takes one guy and this expensive piece of camera equipment. I'm not gonna pretend to know how it does it, but it's really fancy and it puts all these points together and scans the building. So we made the recommendation to the town that I think this would be the best way to kind of map out that building.
Right.
Any questions? That, that task order, I believe, was for seventeen thousand five hundred.
Any question? Board members will come back and discuss this while Ryan's here. Any questions before we say goodbye?
I guess I would just be curious. I mean, the, the way you're explaining it really is that it's sort of an upfront investment that will pay off down the road as we continue to work on the building. Do you anticipate that in terms of, I don't know, like file compatibility or, you know, is it, is it really a one-time thing that, you know, we, we do it once and it's good for a decade? Or do you see a need to sort of update it as we go?
I guess that would depend on how many improvements happen inside the building, right? But as far as having an existing mapping of what the building and also historical mapping of what the building once was, right? I don't see you having to update the file type. There, these are all the new programs that are coming with architects right now, like Revit, all use this file type and it's with it. The program was made to work with. A number of our clients that are working on Mill buildings are all using this file type. As far as updating, if you make enough renovations, all of a sudden it's kind of obsolete, right? So I can't promise you it's gonna be good for ten years. But hopefully, in, in an ideal world, the building becomes this like completely new structure that's being used by the community for whatever purpose you guys decide and it's completely different. And yes, you'd have to redo it again. But hopefully at that time, we already know what the plans look like and we won't have to remap it again.
Okay. So just to follow up on that, then the, the type of data file that this comes out as is not something that is updatable, I guess. So if you, we had to do plans for, you know, whatever, partitions or changing door sizes or something, you can't update it on this?
It would. It becomes part of a 3D model that the architects literally work inside of and then they can, they can print it out literally to a 2D plan. But in their model, they're updating the wall space. So like, let's just say in an area, they added a divider wall and they made office spaces. In their new model, that wall would live and it's updated. And so that model would live on. It just wouldn't be like a scan of the realistic environment. It would have a mix of realistic scans and 3D models that they've created.
But it can be adapted.
Yeah, it will be adapted along the way, yes.
Good.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, Ryan. Okay, we'll jump back. Folks, can we go to, I apologize to the folks at home watching this scroll quickly. Let's jump back on. So there's the letter. We didn't get that grant. We've been very successful in grants, but we did get two no's in the last few months. AOT, first of all, the annual conference for the folks at home. Your elected officials do have continuing ed. The Association of Towns sponsors an annual conference every presidential day weekend. Were all the towns nine hundred and thirty-three of them, right? Nine hundred and thirty-three.
I thought it was nine forty-two.
They must have done a relative deal. No, I think it's nine hundred and thirty-three. Come together and there are courses and all different topics, timely issues. And several of us attend. And the association itself has legislative priorities that they put forth. It's usually a top ten list, if you will, of the most important issues in front of them. Often there are recurring themes on a manual basis. And so they ask each town to support or to comment to contribute towards those legislative priorities. And so we did discuss them all at our last meeting. And the, there's a vote at the conclusion of each one of those conferences. And folks, I'll be able to attend. So asking you once again to designate me as the voting member on Wednesday morning and with Bill as my backup, just in case something happens. I get sick, better not. Are you all okay with that?
So are we.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Julia?
Hi.
All right, William?
Hi.
Myself, okay. So we had lengthy discussions on all of these proposed resolutions. There were a couple we wanted to come back to. Some were sort of no brainers. Home rule, more funding for state roadways. What we're already sharing. Resolution number four. Julia, we had some fairly extensive conversation about this.
Yeah. I mean, I reread the, the proposed resolution today. I think if other board members are comfortable supporting it, I would also be comfortable supporting it. I would just ask that if, if you have an opportunity to make any comments emphasizing that from our perspective, we feel the urgency of this issue and that we strongly support making proactive and innovative solutions.
Okay, what about on the issue of? Not that Red Hook is the only municipality trying to tackle this issue, but the equity and fairness issue that we believe that all municipalities should be engaged so that the burden doesn't fall upon. Right, I don't think we wanna have all the affordable housing, for example, in Hudson Valley, right? We want everybody to share and all of our objectives. Yes. Okay, so I can add some comments to that concerning the.
When they do the vote, they go resolution by resolution. Ultimately, certain individuals in towns get up and say.
Okay, dedicated funding program, municipal water and sewer. That's a no brainer. There was a resolution opposing changing town elections from odd to even years. If you did not watch the last meeting, there was a law proposed, a bill proposed for two reasons. One, apparently for efficiency and two, for better engagement, to take local elections and move them to even years so they would coincide with state elections, congressional elections, be more public participation. The association has asked us municipalities to weigh in. However, they say that there's a chance that this will become moot because the governor may in fact, may get passed and the governor may in fact sign it. The governor did in fact sign the legislation. So elections that take place after 2025 will coincide so that they fall on even years. So if somebody's running for a four-year term in 2025, they're actually running for a three-year term and that will end in 2028. And then they'll be on that cycle. So we don't need to weigh in on that one. That's already taken out of our hands. Reform inequities and the real property tax cap formula. This is an issue for many communities where the tax cap has really held down their ability to perform services within budget. This has not been an issue for us because we have not raised taxes in the last eight years. So the tax cap amount has been irrelevant. I don't know, do we wanna weigh in on, on this? What, what it seeks to do is to remove infrastructure, projects from the tax cap calculation. Thoughts on that?
It seems almost to penalize towns like ours for, you know, keep staying under the cap. And, you know, I can't remember how fair that is.
Okay.
Well, I think it makes sense of the way it seems to be explained is because of, I think part of the reason is the way, the different financing that would be involved. But that doesn't come into play. You just have to have the whole amount of the project as opposed to like annual payments or whatnot you're gonna bond it. So I think it does make sense to get that out.
I'm just not sure the taxpayer necessarily knows how much of their tax bill is going to an infrastructure project, for example, and how much goes to ongoing expenses. I think, I can't speak for all our constituents. We'll try to, but you know, I, I suspect that they care mostly about their tax bill and what those amounts are and what they're getting for the taxes as opposed to the apportionment, so.
Well, yeah, but the, so for instance, I see that. So this, this says, whereas towns are required to include improvement district costs in their tax cap calculation despite these districts being a separate taxing entity that provides essential services. So that would be like our water districts. And we have a huge issue coming from replacing a water tank, which is going to be very, very expensive. So if we have to include the entire cost of the tank in one year's budget, that could seriously impact our ability to stay under the cap. Whereas if we, for instance, perhaps bonded for that, then we only had to include the bonding payments as opposed to all of it at one time in one year. I think that would make a difference to our ability to stay under the cap and not have to raise taxes.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I don't think we would buy a new water tank for the water district, for example, all at once. We would finance it.
Right, but, but the way this is explaining that it's currently calculated, we have, we would have to include the entire cost.
Uh, no, I don't think that's sort of nice.
Well, that's what it sounds like to me.
Yeah.
But anyway, I don't have a problem.
You don't have a problem. That's a reasonable question, okay. Again, that's, I think it's more relevant for other municipalities, but, but I think it's good that we weigh in on it nonetheless. You think that? You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you know, another key point too, remember we talked about the fact that school districts aren't, do not have the same limitation in their calculus. So that means that we would all be calculating it the same way for tax caps too.
Okay.
Which, you know, the issue that you just brought up of taxpayers looking at their bills and trying to figure things out, then at least it would be apples to apples because everything's calculated the same way.
Okay. Sounds like we're supporting resolution number seven, yeah. Okay. Number eight? Yes, speaking of.
I don't think we should support this.
You know, and Nikki asked me, what are those speed limits signs going up in Forest Park, in College Park? And it's just, I mean, how long it takes DOT to just send a formal letter saying you can approve. But I'll be in touch with them again tomorrow. I know that the highway department is, you know, busy with other things right now. Anyway, but it'd be nice if DOT, that'll give you some idea of how backlog they are, right? We've got approval back in eight, October rather, and here we are. End of January, we still don't have formal.
But we have the signs, so as soon as we get it, they can go up.
They can go up.
Well, I also think about the most important part of this is the cost of the engineering studies that are required every time, that we have to submit to DOT every time we ask about a road.
Right. And this resolution quotes an average of two years to respond to this speed limit request by DOT. And frankly, I think now that there's been more authorization from Albany, the backlog is just gonna explode. And this is why we've said all along, it's not the right approach. The right approach is to allow municipalities to determine for themselves on their local roads with what the appropriate speed limit should be. But we are at the mercy of New York State with this. Increased state competitive bidding thresholds. Yeah, so when we go out for competitive bids, anything above thirty-five thousand and a purchase contract over twenty thousand, those limits have been in place for quite some time now. And so it would be appropriate for those thresholds to be updated with inflation over the course of the last couple of decades. I think those figures have been in place. Any questions about that one? Okay. And then the last resolution is to support and collaborate with local governments to reach the climate leadership in community. And then the last resolution is to support and collaborate with local governments to reach the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act goals. And so we know that we're doing that. There's been a thinking out there that the goals are ambitious and that we need to ramp up some of our efforts, certainly on a state level in order to achieve those limits on emissions. We talk about the school buses, obviously an issue that was brought up here last year for the folks at home, just a reminder, our school district utilized 2022, 155,000 gallons of diesel. So in looking at the environmental impact of that, there's lots of funding coming forward to convert those school buses to electric. And there's a requirement starting in 2027. Resolution 11, support justice courts by increasing court fees and keeping town justices local. That's the other thing that needs to be updated for inflation is that the state keeps a certain amount when folks come in front of us, local justice court. And that needs to be updated, what the local municipality is able to retain. Any questions? No, we're all good, I think we know what we're supporting, okay.
Do you want to do a motion for that or no?
Uh, no, we don't need to. Hopefully I've got the notes correctly. All right, let's move right on to where you are. Let's keep it moving. So I know some of you had a chance to touch base with some of your committees. I was able to speak to some chairs again this week. Ag and open space, I was able to speak to Marianne Johnson. And so on the 2024, she's willing to stay on as chair. And the members going to be reappointed, those that are up for reappointment, that's Ken McGlory, Norm Brad, John Hardeman, Sam Rose. Those are for two-year terms ending in 2025.
Governor, do you need to reappoint Marianne to the committee as well as reappointing her as chair?
Yes, we do. And so would you like to make that motion? Okay, so that's a combined motion and I will second that. All in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Okay. Assessment or review board, we just need to reauthorize Pete Hubble as the chair of the ARB and I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Okay, and then on community preservation fund, PDR advisory committee, same thing, Marianne Johnson, chair. And then two-year terms for Chris Close and Emily Major.
Is this three-year terms?
Sorry, three-year terms, that's what I meant to say, thank you. Indiana, can we just correct Emily's last name, it's M A J E R?
Yes.
Should there be space between Marianne and Marianne Johnson as well?
Yeah, sure. Emily Major is our town historian, of course, don't know that. Communications committee, let's come back to that because we want to reconstitute that one, same thing with complete streets. Oh, sorry, did I already?
Yes.
That's not the point, thank you. I'd like to make a motion where you reappoint Marianne Johnson as the chair and reappoint Chris Close and Emily Major for three-year terms ending in 2026. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine, all in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Thank you, Deanna, for the reminder. Let's go to conservation advisory council. Spoke to Lori Houston, are willing to stay on as chair in 2024, I'd like to make that as a separate motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Mike Zili resigned, so there's a vacancy there. And then reappointments, and I think they have somebody in line for that, reappointments. We have Lori, Dennis, Leah, the other Lori, and Jen Kavanagh. And I'd like to make that motion to reappoint them for terms ending in 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Christine?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Design review, Hamlet?
We didn't hear back from Chris unless you heard from him.
I did not hear back from Chris, okay? Do you want to, we'll leave that for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Disaster preparedness committee, so this is one of those committees that we want to reimagine. We have a very we've taken two cracks at a disaster preparedness plan, it's a very good plan. Of course, that isn't all encompassing what a community might encounter. We found that out with the pandemic, the disaster covers things like storms and so on and so forth. What we might want to do is consider having a resiliency committee. A committee where folks can work on understanding what we can do to be better prepared for more than just natural disasters. And I think it would be more interesting and more effective for us. So that's, that's my proposal for you to consider. And we don't have to make any decisions tonight, but would ask you to, to think about that. I think we could get a lot of folks interested in, in doing that type of work. Economic development committee. We, Jacob, have we, do we know what we'd like to do there or we want to give that some more thought?
I think we want to have some more thought. I know we had one person who submitted a letter of interest. I think we do have a vacancy that's not listed here. I think there's only eight listed on the nine-person committee. I haven't been able to contact anyone already. It was a reappointment, I think we missed that last year, so I can circle back on that.
All right, so we'll leave that for next meeting. Okay. Energy committee. We have just two appointments, reappointments to make there. Dennis Colley as the chair for a period ending 2024 and Paul Fletcher Hill for two-year period ending in 2025 and I'd like to make that motion.
Wait, did you, was that Dennis for chair and to 2025?
It was a combo.
Okay, sorry, didn't hear you.
And I, I know that Paul's is sort of off-cycle from the others, that, that's intentional?
Well, there's supposed to be more off-cycle than that. We generally have most of our committees where they're not all coming.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering with.
Yeah. I think we should check that. Deanna, can, can we check, check preview considerations of this, that does seem out that somehow it seems off-cycle or it should be. You know what, I think maybe once upon a time it started as a one-year. It's in its 15th year now though.
Yeah, I just thought it should be three and four, it should be.
Yeah.
Because there's a vacancy on an odd year or two, so if it's two and five, that's one thing, but it should be a three and four.
Well, let's, yeah, let's work on that, especially for the 2024 terms. Let's try and get them more staggered. I think because they all started at once, I think that's going to be in there. Okay.
Do you have a second?
Oh, yeah. Would you like to do that?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Myself. Ethics?
Yeah, so I think we can, I think we missed reappointing Gail last year, I did hear back from her, but I don't think we still got back to it. So I think we're in shape to reappoint Brenda as the chair for a term ending in 2024, right, it's a one-year term, so. For Gail for a term ending in 2027 and for Susan Simon to be reappointed to a term ending in 2024.
Twenty-eight.
Oh, you're right, sorry.
Five-year term.
Like for the chair, I don't, sorry, it's 2028, it's five-year.
No worries.
Excuse me. Amy Linker, that, that position became vacant, she never took her own. And I just found that today. So, and I, we contacted her a lot, so that might need to be.
I can circle back with her too.
Yeah.
Because she was attending meetings, so I didn't know that she hadn't done that, so I'll, I'll follow up with her.
So she will have to
Do it over.
Probably be.
Right point.
Yeah, but, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're probably trying to keep her on this.
Even if you do, you just have to. Yeah, because she's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You'll take care of that?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so a motion to, you made a motion to reappoint Brenda as chair, Gail, a term ending in 27, Susan ending in 28. And who's seconding that?
Me.
Christine, thank you. All in favor? Julia?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Myself, thank you. Okay, so that's ethics. Greenway and Trails?
I'm actually, I got an email from her, but I can't, I couldn't find it, so I'll have to circle back with these just to confirm.
Right, so she, first of all, Bruce comes off, Bruce was a fairly recent resignation. We thank him for all those years. And I think she was trying to see if Howie still wanted to stay on but that the others were going to stay on. And so what I would suggest is in the meantime, we entertain a motion to reappoint Lisa herself and as chair and then do Brenda and Jim Blakeney, both who are fairly recent for periods ending in 2025.
Lisa needs a reappointment to the committee beyond, beyond the chair.
That's what I said.
Oh, I thought you left.
Yeah, yeah, no, that is, that as well.
Okay.
To the committee and chair. And I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor? Jacob?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Aye.
I was kidding to you.
All right, he said there's one.
Trying to move it along.
Yeah, thank you.
And this is something?
Excuse me, so you reappointed Brenda Cable?
Brenda, Jim Blakeney, Lisa Whalen, and as chair.
Okay, meaning Howie for.
Right, she had questions, Bruce resigned and she was going to reach out to Howie.
Yes.
Okay. Housing committee, do we have anything on that?
So we have some updates, so.
Oh, sorry.
Well, no, either one.
Yeah, both of you.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a new committee, there's been a little bit of sifting as, as would be expected. So we have three resignations. Michael Cole, Vicki Hickman, and Aisha Keller are no longer serving.
Uh, sorry, Michael Cole, what were the other?
Vicki Hickman and Aisha Keller.
Okay, Aisha, okay.
So if anyone out there is interested in housing and has time to serve, we would love to talk to you.
Okay. But we can reappoint Hart, yeah?
I think that's okay, yeah.
Okay. So why don't we go ahead and do that? I'll make that motion to reappoint Hart Mendel for term ending in 2024 as the chair of the committee, is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Jacob. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Good for her.
Aye.
Okay, so intermunicipal task force after how many years is that running? For 21?
Seventeen years?
Seventeen years. They went on sabbatical. We are at the point where we received, we applied for and received a grant to update our comprehensive plan or at least to review our comprehensive plan and update portions of that need updating. It's a very public input process-driven type of event that generally lasts a couple of years. So my suggestion would be is that we you know, we've, we've held this committee on paper anyway, but that we consider maybe removing it for now and have instead a comprehensive plan update committee that we put together over the next couple of months or so. While we also go out try to time this with the grant and when we said we were going to, to do this project so we can get reimbursed coincident with the work. But also go out and do an RFP for a consultant to work with us. And I'm wondering if there's a council person who would like to spearhead that effort? Julia?
So, yes, I am interested and invested in the comprehensive plan. I would be happy to liaise to such a committee if we chose to form one. I just, I want to ask as a clarifying question. You brought up two topics, one of which is the dissolution or, or, you know, tabling of the intermunicipal task force and the other is the forming of a comprehensive plan committee. Those things are separate in my mind.
They are, they are, but I'm, I'm wondering since they went on a self-imposed sabbatical and thought that they had sort of accomplished their mission, whether or not we might put, put this task force to bed and perhaps focus our efforts on putting together a comprehensive review committee.
I would be comfortable with that. I just want to, I would not want there to be expectations that the comprehensive plan committee is somehow a, like a, it flows from the rest of the committee.
Sure, sure, yeah.
So I think Julia's point is, let's just, if we're going to get rid of the IMF, we'll get rid of that and then we're going to form another one, form another one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess the question.
Which I would support.
Yeah, I was wondering whether when you were raising that, if your idea was to use a similar sort of composition in terms of where we're pulling from for the committee members, not necessarily the same people, but thinking about this as a model to pull from the villages, to pull from certain committees to compose as opposed to being a committee that's just, you know, members that don't have specific, you know, positions within the community.
Right.
Well, I think that topic probably needs some further thought.
Yeah, exactly.
The one thing to consider though is that the ITF was chaired by a member of this town board. And so I guess the question is, is the comprehensive plan committee going to be chaired by a member of this board? Or chaired by somebody else? And then we have, as we did with the ITF, individuals who've sat on that, you know, in some capacity.
Yeah, but we don't have to decide that tonight.
Right.
Just putting it out there.
So not if we're in terms of formation of a new committee, would we need to meet that now or do we sort of discuss it now and bring forth a resolution later? I know the village of Rydbeck had a resolution forming, sort of officially kicking off their comprehensive process forming committee, which we should consider, I guess.
Yeah, we would need to have a resolution to form a committee. Yeah, we would need to have a resolution to form a committee. And we could do that if you want this evening, or, or in a subsequent, I'm just sort of trying to get, you know, keep the ball rolling. As far as who occupies the actual committee, you know, a lot of models now have, say, a committee that, that meets frequently and often. Lots of subcommittees, lots of advisory groups, and then needed. The idea is you want to capture everybody in some capacity, match it up to their capacity. They may be able to, you know, attend once or twice a committee input session. Others may be willing and, and needed for the committee itself to help sort of structure and guide that. So we just want to make sure that there's a bucket for everybody to fall into. Lots of, lots of communities have undergone this in the last several years, lots of different models. And I think we should, you know, also hear from our consultant, you know, best way to make sure we've got good stakeholder representation as well. So what's your thoughts? Come up with numbers of members. We don't have to do this tonight. But just give it some thought about, you know, maybe at the next meeting, shall we, shall we, at least for the time being, retire Intermunicipal Task Force since it's been on the piece of paper for a couple of years?
Yes.
Yes.
We thank them all for 17 years of weekly meeting.
Every Friday morning, yeah.
Every Friday morning. They've done terrific work. Something that hopefully won't last 17 years. Christine came in the local waterfront.
I hope it lasts 17 years.
Thanks.
What's that? What's that you just thought?
So we're, we're, you know, like, it's close, and we actually just had a meeting last week. So I think it's safe to reappoint everybody.
Okay. So that would be Paula.
Paula as chair.
For a term ending in 24.
Yeah.
Emily, 25. Paula as a member, 25. Amy, Houston, 25. Brent Kowalczek, 25. Paul, okay, so everybody's on the same, there's no stagger here, obviously, because this was a specific task committee.
Yeah, we had, the committee had submitted a final draft of the plan, which is with Department of State. And they sent back some comments, so we had a meeting about how to respond to those. So, so updates will be made, and then it'll be back to the state, and then it's pretty much in the town board's lap at that point.
Great. We'll wait to get those final comments from them. Okay, so did you make a motion?
I will.
Would you?
Sure, to reappoint all of the members to the committee, to another two-year appointment in 2025, and Paula Schoenmaker as chair for one year for 2024.
May I second that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Jacob?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Okay. Planning Board, so we, we tackled Planning Board a little bit at our last meeting. Suffice it to say that Karen Smythe, who as mayor now has resigned because of the duties associated with that office, but is willing to stay on as an alternate. So I would like to go ahead and make that motion that we appoint Karen Smythe to the vacancy for an alternate on the Planning Board, period ending 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Christine.
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. All in favor of Julia?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Okay, okay. Recreation Commission, I spoke to Doug Strubinsky, and there are no changes there. So the ones that need to be reappointed are Jim Mulley, Terry Lau, Tom Gilbert, and the ever-wonderful Paty Boe. Four two-year appointments ending in 2025. I would add to that motion to reappoint Doug Strubinsky as the chair of the Rec Commission.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor? Jacob?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Aye.
Red Church Cemetery Committee, no changes there. Really, John Keun has been acting as the chair of the Red Church Cemetery Committee. And so I'd like to go ahead and appoint him as such, ending in 2024. And what a wonderful job our staff has been doing maintaining that historic cemetery and building since we were required to take it over just a few years ago.
Barbara, I have a question about this committee and St. Margaret's, kind of along the lines of your resilience committee. You know, not something that we would have done now, but maybe something to think about through the year.
Oh, I'm on Red Church, though.
I know.
You're, okay.
It's related.
But, but.
Oh, okay.
Because we have the Red Church as a standalone committee, and we previously had St. Margaret's, and they, they share some similarities as historic properties in the town. I have wondered sometimes whether it might make sense to broaden the scope of that committee to be more comprehensive.
Well, or to just.
Or to do a GPW.
Or all that too, or, as I was saying, or just combine them under the Rec Committee and make the Rec Committee a little bigger with a couple, you know, a couple more seats, maybe. But, but on the other hand, I mean, if we have, you know, we have different people on some of the committees, and.
Yeah, no, I can see pros and cons, I just.
Has the Cemetery Committee been meeting at the end of year?
Um, well, no, we, we met, but it was just John and I. But I don't, I don't feel comfortable, like, saying that I would support that, combining them, because we are totally different, what we do is totally different. Like Emily and I, Jackie and I have met over there. Maybe we don't have meetings, but it just doesn't seem like it relates to the others.
Yeah.
You know, in that sense, because we are working, we're just not meeting.
Yeah.
You know, we have been very in the background.
Yeah.
But I think the principle's still good for Julia's sort of idea about, like, instead of having committees for, for a specific space.
Yes.
I mean, if you want to think about.
Historic properties.
We're, we're talking about a Richard Cemetery Committee, maybe it makes sense to keep that as its own thing, or going to move on to the St. Margaret's Committee as the next one, but maybe thinking about what that looks like, right? You suggested maybe having it be something that falls under Rec, or maybe having a, you know, Historic Properties Committee. That's something that I, I.
You could have subcommittees of the Rec Committee.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that probably, because John is key to all of them, and Doug as the chair, so. It might make more sense to have them as subcommittees of the Rec Committee, but we should probably talk to Doug and John about it before we do any of that.
I don't, I don't picture it that he would change anything now, it's just.
Just an idea of what to do. Because I, I think that with, you know, the Rec Commission doing, you know, work on historic properties, right, like there is, there are a few that they go to, they do work at. Like, it would be good to have, you know, maybe we think about the way that that works, right? Maybe we have somebody who's specifically appointed to be part of the subcommittee for that, or something like that. I think that might be a way to sort of capture, instead of having so many diffuse committees, having it be something that fits another might make sense, but I think some way of considering that, like Julia said, makes sense to think about not just one specific property for a committee, but having. And then if, you know, if there are other properties over time, the town's responsible for it, you know where they fit naturally.
Right.
Question for Deanna. You're working on, you know, the, the church cemetery. Have you met as an entire committee, like, at least once a year?
Well.
They haven't met.
We had met as a, in committee, but we had other people come. Like, and, but, but really, it's more like Jackie and I have met, Emily and I have met, John I have met. It's just not.
Not so much.
If we do, it's like, if we do meet, it's usually in the church, and we just sort of meet up.
I just think about the water board, you know, as a best practice.
I would like to meet more often. That's why I think we just started, you know, John's there. We've talked to Joe when we're there, but it's, I would like to meet more formally, so. I mean, I wouldn't mind if, you know, I would work with John if we had to, like, for chair, if he's too busy, you know? So, you know, he has, he needs help.
Yeah, let's, let's give it some more thought, because they're really sort of, I, I see it as two separate items. There's the maintenance issue, right? There's the maintaining the properties. And then ultimately, once, for example, St. Margaret's is safe to be occupied, you know, there'll be work towards.
The use of property.
Exactly. And then we'll be ready to focus on how the building can be used. So, all right, let's get that some more thought then. And we'll, well, why don't we, why don't we just table both of those committees for now? And see if we're going to perhaps move towards a Historic Property Committee or something like that. All right. Senior Services, so made a few phone calls on that. That's another one of those committees that was meeting regularly, and then the pandemic came. And they were very helpful during the initial part of the pandemic. They reached out to all the seniors in the community and found out what their needs were and assisted with that. So we want to get that up and running again. And so it makes some phone calls to some groups that might be able to help us reconstitute some of those folks that are no longer involved. Some of Nancy Finkel, for example, passed away. So we'll come back to that one also in February. All right, Tree Preservation Commission.
Yeah, so it looks like we missed this last year for the reappointments, so I know that everybody wanted to continue. So I'll make a motion to reappoint Kathy Michael as a chair for a term ending in 2024. And then, you know, those first four names there, Karen Catterett, Doug Trout, Kathy Michael, George Michael, to reappoint for a term ending in 2024. And then Cody Hay, David Grover, and Alicia, Alicia Riedma. Could be wrong, for terms ending in 2025.
Twenty-five, okay. Good. That covers, that covers the whole shebang, as they say. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Very good. All right. All in favor? Julia?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Myself, thank you very much. Thank you all, Tree Preservation Commission members. Water District Water Board, Bill?
So I spoke to Hank today, and he has graciously agreed to serve as the chair for one more year. And his term expires as a member of 2024, so all we have to do is re-up him for the chair. And Jared Gilneck has agreed for a two-year appointment and to be a one-year appointment as the vice chair. And Michael Runberg has agreed for a reappointment. Still waiting to hear from Greg, Larry, and Evelyn. I was just checking my phone to see if any emails came in, you know, since then, with any additional information. And there's not. So we might as well deal with the ones that we've got agreements from, and I'll hopefully have, for the next meeting, the answers on the remaining. So I make a motion that we reappoint Andrew Van Pari as the chair for a one-year appointment. And we appoint Michael Runberg and Jerry Gilneck for two-year appointments ending in 2025. And then reappointing Jerry Gilneck for a period of one year ending 2024 as the vice chair.
Perfect. And I will second that. Any further questions or comments? All in favor of Julia?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
And Christine?
Aye.
Okay, we tackled CBA last meeting, zoning review committee, so there again. What I would say is that that committee's been on hiatus, and it would probably be good to revisit this committee when the town is ready to implement any changes to the comprehensive plan, because oftentimes the changes result in changes in zoning. And so at this point, I would maybe make a suggestion that we remove the zoning review committee from our list and then bring it back at the appropriate time.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, second.
All in favor of Jacob?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Okay.
So if you could comment, could you do a motion for the Intermunicipal Task Force to solution?
I, I thought we did, but let's do it again. We're going to retire on our list, the Intermunicipal Task Force. We thought we did a motion. You have a motion?
I have two. I didn't have one to retire.
To retire, okay.
Or vote.
So Jacob just made one.
Jacob just did it. Christine?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? William, you gonna be okay?
Yeah.
Julia?
Aye.
I have a question on the zoning review committee. And I agree, obviously, I vote to, yeah, to, with the Vashon for now. But my sense is, if the work that the comprehensive plan, why would we need a zoning review committee if those zoning issues are going to be encompassed by the, by a comprehensive plan committee? Unless you think it's important to keep a standing committee, but we haven't done any zoning, like, real zoning work since the last, well, when they did Greenspan, since Greenspan.
Since the Greenspan, as well, we had no, there were a lot of, a lot of things that came out of, say, the task force. Some things went back to the zoning review committee. I know they spent, gosh, what, four years on fences? Do you remember that? It was not there for the whole. It just was something that kept bouncing back and forth.
I was just thinking more about sort of in stop shopping, because a comp plan is going to be a fairly comprehensive. Anything's going to be.
Yeah, but it's hard to.
It won't. I think it may not get down to the level of specificity that this committee would do.
Once you make the plan, then you have to change the zoning.
And obviously, they would need to work hand-in-hand with the town planner. But I can see that there could be a role for a committee like this down the road. So I don't want to lose sight of it altogether. I agree. I think, obviously, it would need to be kind of reconstituted and recharged, but.
Okay. Very good. Well, so at our next meeting, I think that concludes where you are. At our next meeting, let's try and wrap up the committees that we're still waiting here back on. And then we can, I can send up from my office, a clarion call, here's where the vacancies are, here's what we need. And then, you know, fill in any gaps that we have. All right. So let's, we've got to keep moving. We've got.
You skipped over St. Margaret's Committee.
We, we didn't skip over it. We, we covered it. We said we're going to come back to it at another time.
Oh, you want to take those people off that are listed?
We said we would come back to the issue at a, at a next meeting, and.
Then I will be here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move on, shall we? Tradition, we're at the point now. Cassie, the final phase, the eighth phase of the development of tradition. And for the folks at home, part of the consideration of whether or not to allow for subsequent phases to move forward is acknowledgement of how they completed all the requirements for the previous phases. And so what we have here is a resolution that basically articulates that. We have some communications from Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, and our engineers doing the review, construction, inspection as it relates to section plaque number eight and the performance bond. They come up with the recommendation of what the bonding amount for the folks at home. Developers don't get to, to just develop. They have to put up bonds to ensure that they complete the aspect of the development that is necessary. Otherwise, the. Otherwise, the town would get stuck with it. And so there are estimates that are put together by our engineers for what that bonding amount should be. That's also included in these documents. And I don't know why that's doing. Here's the last phase, phase eight. Yet to be filed and to be built. In my understanding, you're about two-thirds built out now, the development. I see Corinne is not here. She was here earlier. She lives in Traditions. And I, you know, noted in visiting many of those folks during the course of 2023, many of them are very happy with the way the development is turning out. So here is section eight for the folks at home.
Did have a question. We received a communication, was it today or yesterday, from the highway superintendent about a water issue at Traditions. It's a photograph. It was kind of unusual. Was the water just actually coming out?
There was some, you know, by the sidewalk was not related to the development, by the sidewalk, by the road, there was some water. Trying to figure out where the water was coming from.
I was just wanting to make sure that there was no relationship either.
No, the engineer's looking at the, it's, there's some, some seepage around the sidewalk there.
Excuse me.
Yeah. There's water everywhere. The water table is high everywhere.
So this is just the performance bond for section eight?
Section eight. And one of the requirements, just a reminder for the folks at home, let this developer pays incentive zoning fees for having this particular density on the property. And those fees are utilized to protect open space and can be reused to acquire land for affordable housing. All the plans that you would ever want to see. Acknowledgment from Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. So folks, we have a resolution number.
Four.
What's that?
Four.
Four. Of 2024. It is a resolution. Get that up on the screen for the folks at home.
Excuse me. Robert, don't forget, you have to put a number of the date in that line, please.
Yeah. It's a resolution.
Due January 24th.
Due to January 24th, 2024. Where are you, resolution?
Page thirty-three.
Regarding tradition at Red Hook, section eight. And it.
Next thing, just a moment.
Yeah. The, the letter of the town engineer, which is also dated the 24th. So we have filled both of those lines, DNR, dated for today, state reference to the letter and to the resolution. Whereas the planning board adopted a resolution back on August 15th, 20, as, August 15th, 2016, entitled Resolution Granting Site Plan Approval to Hoffman Property Traditional Neighborhood Development. And the resolution titled approval to file subdivision plan and incentive zoning for Hoffman Property Traditional Neighborhood Development subdivision for a 102 lock residential community development project known as the Hoffman Project. And it gave permission to file a subdivision plan in sections. And so here we are today with section eight. Requires, there are many requirements as part of the approval to move forward with phase eight. They've met the conditions of the previous phases. Part and parcel is yet another payment into the incentive zoning fund, this time of 155,000. A change we estimate based upon current median sales price in the town, sorry, the county. And you see here the conditions. Okay. The sidewalk easement for Old Farm Road. Improvements. Bond, 54,000. Any questions about this resolution? If not, it's resolution number four. Who would like to move resolution number four, Christine?
I would.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving right along sort of committee and board reports. There we are. Police, Bill?
So they submitted this as a report for November in which they logged in 98 incidents or all issued 24 violation traffic tickets. They made two arrests. The report is, speaks for itself in terms of the types of call, of types of calls that 98 represents. The only thing I would point out is the school resource officer. It shouldn't be confused as that there's an event at the school every, every day. It's the way they log sending an officer there. If you drive by at 2:30 in the afternoon, there's always an officer there at traffic. And so it's, it's a call. So they don't, have you figured out another way to, to log it without showing up on this report? But, you know, all the calls are, they're self-explanatory.
Thank you. Okay, recreation.
Okay. Quite the set. Okay, so interesting, as we were speaking earlier about perhaps combining or reconstituting committees for the properties that the town has. So I'll start with the general recreation commission report as of January 8th. As noted previously, the, the rec parks are closed. And just want to remind everybody at home that the, so it's closed, that includes the pickleball courts. So the nets, all the nets are down. There should be no shoveling of snow on the courts because it does damage the courts. So that's the tennis courts as well as the pickleball courts. So they officially closed no more games of that. We're still waiting for the delivery of the sound blocking acoustic fence panels for around the skate park. Thought we would have them by now, but we don't. Still working to finalize the vandalism issues that happened in the men's room at the rec park twice. We now have put electronic door locks on there. The repairs have been done. But there's also now electronic door locks. Still in the process of collecting the user fees for the past year for, from the various groups that use the park, the ball fields, the basketball courts, the tennis courts, et cetera. Lots of things getting ready for, you know, sealing things up for winter, getting supplies in for beginning for next year. I have breakdowns for each of the different divisions and projects. And there is, John Kuhn has undertaken creating sort of a maintenance guidelines for the park and some of the other properties so that we'll have things written up and in place to follow for those. So that's a big, that right there is a big undertaking. So as far as the individual reports, so at the dog park, so, so just to be clear, the rec department does the two rec parks, the dog park, Red Church Cemetery, which includes the Red Church, Red Church Building. They also take care of the town hall, maintenance property there, and St. Margaret's. Okay, so for the dog park, several, they had several projects and purchases that were completed in 2023. So we are getting two picnic tables to put out there. Or they were assembled and moved to the dog park. New stockade fence was put up. We have the pet waste dispensers there and garbage containers, et cetera. So we've done a lot of work to just upgrade, make it more user-friendly. Let's see, some other things, latches were fixed, old metal poles and stuff were removed. And just as, you know, like we tried to put hand sanitizer out and it just disappeared in the first week. So 76 hours of time, crew time for the dog park. Then we have the Red Church Cemetery year-end report with over, almost 1,100 hours of work there for a number of different projects, as you might imagine, of the bulk of which is mowing and trimming. A lot of work along the property lines to clean them up. We actually have now have a half an acre more usable area. Now that all those, all the debris and vines and overground trees and broken fences and stuff, so that's all of them dealt with. Big project this year was filling in sunken graves. In 2023, 114 sunken graves were built in. And they're estimating a hundred more in 2024. This requires quite a bit of work because they have to transport, transport all the dirt out there to do it. Then they have to be raked and remove stones and leveled and grass seed and all finally in there so that that can be all regrown. That's done for safety reasons as well as ease of maintenance and mowing. Because as they point out in here, it is, you know, it's an active, open cemetery and a historic site. So there's constantly people in there. So we don't want anybody tripping and falling and getting hurt because of a sunken grave issue. So the other, another big thing is monument repairs and headstone repairs. So we have a special lift that can be used for the monuments. So six of those were repaired, reset and pinned. That's a minimum two-person job to do that. In the older section of the cemetery, where the stones are mostly from the 1800s, 21 stones had fallen down or lying flat. So they were all dug out, cleaned and put back and repaired before putting back. In the newer parts of the cemetery, the more recent parts of the cemetery, over 100 monuments and tablets were put back. So it's time-consuming to do that, but it does result in efficiencies for, again, for the mowing and the trimming. And they did want me to specifically say that while mowing is of course important to the appearance, it's the trimming that really makes it look cared for and is part of the real, what should be required basic maintenance. And that takes a lot of time going around all those stones. So the more that can be reset, the, the faster and better that goes. All of those stones have been cleaned. The ones that have been reset have been cleaned. They have a, they're using a biological stone cleaner so that it will not harm the stone, but it removes the mold and algae without having to do heavy scraping or brushing to damage the stones, especially the older stones. So besides the ones that were cleaned in connection with being reset, they also did 50 other stones of cleaning this year. Continuing fence repairs of the aluminum, aluminum fence along 9G. Mostly a lot of deer damage. They run into it. And then the general year-end cleaning and storing of equipment. But as we mentioned also earlier, so this property does include the Red Church building itself, which needs a lot of work and has, as time allows, has been being addressed. And the original plan was to paint the west side of the church this year, but it turned out that the north side was in much worse shape. So they, Joe Kuhn led the effort there, one with Jeff Tremper, to re-glaze the windows and paint the windows. They're, the big heavy shutters were, had to be removed. They're very heavy to get fixed and put back in place. Boards had to be replaced. And so the north side is now done and the hope is that they will get to the west side next year. And let's see. And then, so the, these repairs to the outside of the church are much more involved than anticipated originally.
Christine, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
And maybe it's a question for John, but you know, what's the, I was thinking, because Ryan mentioned shipboat, you know, what's the threshold for having to communicate with them about those kinds of essentially routine maintenance that on an old building, you know, one thing leads to another? Like how much latitude do we have to just do what we need to do?
I do not know. I do, he has listed in here that there are, they get these specific boards because they're all thicker than they were longer and stuff, and that we have found a place to get those. So I, I do believe that they are trying to match
Yeah.
in size and style what is there. But, you know, I don't think, for instance, I don't know how much old glass was really left anyway. So I don't know that we're like going out to try to find old glass to replace it.
I have a quick question too, about the resetting of the stones. There were a lot that were down. Did John have any concern that those were acts of vandalism or was it just nature?
I think a lot of it was just nature because they'd really been dug in for a long, they, they really had to take a lot of them out. So they've been there. And then, you know, especially in the older section, you know, hundreds of years old.
And, and cemeteries is not an uncommon event.
Right, yeah.
I'd be, you know, I'd want to consider some things that we could pursue if, if it was.
Well, and there's no indication that it was, but also the materials that were used for the stones in that period of time don't last, you know, marble and sandstone, they, they weather and they wear down, fall over and break. And of course, you know, we have snow around here, so they freeze and crack and water and all that.
Not for long.
Right. Okay, and so as with all of our properties, all of the, we always, there's lots of tree work, removal, trying to minimize potential hazards as well as like at, I'll talk about St. Margaret's, some trees came down. So that's, that takes up a tremendous amount of time. We do have bluebird, a bluebird box project at the number of our properties. So at the Red Church, 11 bluebird eggs were laid and all 11 hatched and fledged. Excuse me? And there were also nine house-run eggs laid and hatched and fledged. I think that's the highlights. There's a complete project list for what would they like to try to undertake in 2024. There are one of which is bringing in electricity so that they can get some more stuff, things done at the church property, the building rather. So, so that's that one. Okay, so then at Red Church, I mean, sorry, St. Margaret's. We have a very extensive listing of all of the outdoor work that was done. And I'm looking for somewhere, I thought I circled the number of hours. Oh, here we go. Almost 200 hours of maintenance at St. Margaret's. So as I mentioned, and we did have four large limbs come down during a snowstorm at that property on Route 9. So those were removed. And also we proactively took down some other limbs that were there along Route 9. That was, you know, $3,500. Does take one for these things to add up. That was, you know, thirty-five hundred dollars, doesn't take long for these things to add up. Able to, now we have a lot of our equipment. Either we ordered some new equipment, things have been repaired. Everything is working all now, all, all the same time. So being able to move the things between the various properties has been very helpful and making our team much more efficient. Constant picking up of garbage and other debris on the property at St. Margaret's before, you know, they can do some, do mowing and whatnot, you know. Blows onto the property, may get, people throw things out as they're driving on Route Nine, unfortunately. Previously, we did talk about how two cisterns on the property were pumped out and filled in. So that was a big project that was undertaken. And again, so as I said, we're not with all the, all of our equipment working and they had a vacuum available to help with the leaves. So it was a huge reduction in time needed to do cleanup and end of, end of season cleanup at the property. Okay, and so I do want to, John specifically put some things in here. So I do want to say that labor to maintain St. Margaret's home is done by the park and Red Church Cemetery staff during hours when they're not working at the other sites. Thanks for the very specific skills of Jeff Tremper and Howie Calles as safe loader and backhoe operators. Very much appreciated, serves, we need that, so it's great that we have people with that. Compliment, he really wanted to compliment Joe Kuhn for his skills and work ethic at the Red Church Cemetery. As I mentioned, he's really heading up all the work on the building, that, all that painting and scraping and repairing and just getting all the ladders and supplies there is just an amazing amount of work. So that's St. Margaret's. And then we have the town hall maintenance report. Again, it's done when it's available from in between other work at the rec park or Red Church Cemetery. They have some plans on the horizon for twenty twenty-four. Looks like one of our trees here at town hall might be dying. Need to do some repairs to the Bilko door, to the basement and address water seepage still in the basement. Hundred and forty-four and a half hours here at town hall. That's everything from mowing, raking, trimming shrubs. They very nicely, when they have time, they help folks here with some interior painting and shelving projects and things like that. So it's really, really great to have that team. That's a really quick summary, but.
Wait, that was the really quick.
Really, believe me, that was the really quick summary. But that, that just shows how much work, they're, they do an amazing amount of work.
Well, you know, and I, I didn't hear you mention, if you did, I apologize. But when you were speaking about Joe Kuhn, who's a master with plaster.
Yeah.
And so he's been working for folks at home, St. Margaret's. If you walk in that building, there were chunks of missing plaster. I mean, you could literally get hit with a big piece, you know, depending upon. This is in such bad shape, wait till you see it. Soon, soon hopefully you'll be finished with it. It's just, it's amazing. So once that building is. What?
And that was Joe.
And that was Joe. And this is what he does for the state or did for the state now that he's retired. We're so lucky to have him. It just, it just looks beautiful in there. So we thank them all, yeah, they're really so talented and very lucky.
And so really, really devoted, I mean, and as John mentioned, their, their work ethic is amazing. The pride they take in their work is amazing and the pride they take in keeping our public spaces, historic properties and recreation spaces, just really at such a high level, which we get compliments on all the time, so.
And, and for those of you who, lest you not forget, Red Church Cemetery, subject of one of the locations in the Netflix movie, Things Heard, Things Heard, Seen, Heard, Not Seen. I hope I got that title with Amanda Seyfried, is that how you pronounce her name, Jacob? You would know.
I would know. I'm the one to ask.
I remember when they were filming.
Somebody help me.
Well, they also filmed over UTS, it was, it was, there was something all over town.
UTS, library, several locations over at the Close Farm. Several locations there, but.
But anyway, our, our team did even more help. Yeah, right.
Okay.
Well, and Chris, I think, you know, this report just goes to show the scope of what that team is working on. I think we, even we sometimes kind of lump it under the heading of the rec department. It's so much.
It's so much more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's why we, we need like maybe a facilities side and then a program, a programmatic side. Different interests, different skill sets. And I think John would be, from what he tells me, would be down for that. Which by the way, that means he'd be up for that. Speaking of, are you up for a water district report?
I guess.
Okay.
I missed the meeting on the week. But they did provide us the reports and I was at the, they provided two reports. One for the November meeting and one for the December, well, yeah, just hope we didn't have a meeting in December. But there's really nothing remarkable to report. The water always tests very clean. They're meeting all their state requirements for PFOA, PFO, PS, you know, they're always, they're always, you know, really good. Our water is, is very clean. These reports, these monthly reports, you know, there's occasional issues involving residents complaining about dirty water, could be silt, having to flush, at the end of a line, if there's a hydrant, they have to flush that because stuff accumulates and then it backs up into the local homes.
Which is why you want loops if you can.
Yeah, you want to have a loop if you can. And with all the rain that we've had, I do know that there were some instances in which there were some people that called that they were concerned that it may have been related to the water. And the water, it wasn't, it was.
It's just the water on the ground.
Water on the ground. So, but I, you know, I have a report, we have great water. And I'm glad we're acquiring the cooking hand, we've acquired cooking hand so it can provide a greater assurance that it will remain.
Yeah, safe water. Before we go on to Highway. Your report, I noticed, didn't mention pickleball indoors.
Oh, yeah.
So now.
That's right, yes.
Now, starting, I guess next week, we're all set with people registered or whatever, there'll be indoor winter pickleball.
Yeah.
Where, where would that be?
At the former Eddie Parker Youth Center, at the gymnasium. There, we signed a contract with the state for us to use it.
Right.
Free of charge.
Free of charge. Free of charge, we have to bring our own toilet paper though. So that's a program running through the rec commission.
But only during specific times. It's not, it's not like you can go anytime and play pickleball.
Yes, in fact.
You have to sign up.
You have to come in here.
Yeah.
Sign a waiver. That gets sent up to the state. We already have over sixty people who have signed up for that. Pickleball mania continues.
Year round, yeah.
But, but, but on a more serious note, I think, hopefully it's just the beginning of indoor activities in the winter for people of all ages. Because frankly, we know that that's healthy for young and old. The Hudson Valley is wonderful, but there can sometimes be a scarcity of activities in the wintertime for folks to do healthy activities. So I hope that this continues, you know, recreation during the winter indoors or even outdoors. You know, we're, we're acquiring properties in public access that are going to be terrific for cross-country skiing, you know, for the few more years where the snow will be coming.
With the rollerblading ones.
The rollerblading ones, okay. So, yeah, I'd be interested to see how it goes. But the pickleballers are just thrilled that they have this, this spot. They're very happy with the gymnasium and it's been a, a great opportunity to repurpose a facility that right now is dormant and has been for the last few years, so. Okay, I apologize for that departure. Jacob, would you like to give the Highway a department report, please?
And we've talked about a lot of these things already tonight, so just briefly touch on them. So as I talked about earlier, there was flooding that occurred last month. Few roads were closed, including, and also Astmore Bridge. There were no significant damages to the report, but it is something that, you know, is concerning about what happens and where we get so much stormwater, so something to be monitoring. Weight limit signs have been going up for the five ton weight limit in all town roads. Those have been installed in various locations, they've seen a few of them up. Installations expected to be completed this month, weather permitting. The Suckhill Bridge replacement in November, there was a meeting with Robert and Hudson Valley Engineer Associates to discuss the bridge design and costs, preparing a presentation for the town board. As we talked about earlier, the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit signs for Forest Park and College Park are ordered and received. And we're just waiting for the official document from the state to authorize installation. Talked about Forest Park drainage and as a number of Teresa's reports have included the salt shed replacement is on here, something that she's noted has continued to deteriorate. The replacement patch is leaking, some of the salt pile, something that Teresa really wants to look at at some point. So we're, should bring it up at some point.
By the way, the update on the brine, exploring brine.
Yeah.
So maybe February now, because I know that.
Oh, we moved to March, I thought.
Everybody was set for March twelfth, but Teresa couldn't make it March twelfth. She had a, a pretty, pre-existing.
I thought we moved it to the second of March meeting. The second of February.
It hasn't been settled yet.
Okay, I thought that was.
They're going to be on the second February, second February, second March. But just an update on that. For the folks at home, just some communities are retreating roads before snowstorms or ice storms. And we'd like to learn more about that. And so we have a couple of folks coming in from the county and actually from the brewery in Brinebeck where they do pre-treat their roads with brine. So look for that in the next several meetings. Okay, control those dogs.
I thought we had a December report, but I guess they didn't.
We did. I thought we did November one on this.
Yeah, I thought we did too. The one thing though, I would point out for the people at home, the way that they report their incidents, if three people call about the same dog that's loose, they count it three times. And so on the dog bites in April, there were not five, there was one. And it happened at the, I believe, the rec park. And a bunch of people saw it and called it in. And so each call is logged and I, you know, I asked them about perhaps either doing a footnote or doing something to make it clear for the public.
They were not separate.
But that's not currently the case.
Well, I thought that.
Yeah.
I thought that loose dog in the village was for like a week or something. Did I follow that?
There was a, there was, there was a dog loose for.
For like a week.
Yeah. And, you know, and everybody, the people would call and say, well, they tried to trap it, they finally did.
Let's see that report.
So that's, I believe that was October, the sixth in October. I'm almost certain was that was the October, was that loose dog was over near the agway.
Yeah, that's right.
So.
So really it was all the way back then?
Yeah.
It was more recent?
No, that's when it was. No, there was, there was post issues related to it, but that's when it actually occurred. So hopefully by the next month we'll have the year end report.
Okay, good, good. Tree preservation, Jacob?
Yeah.
Whatever your name is. Good night's sleep.
Amanda Seafried.
What's that?
Amanda Seafried. So for the January monthly report, the following items are discussed. The spring tree order is in place at Shaker's Nursery. It consisted of eleven trees, eight of which we placed, planted on Bud's Corners Road and three we planted on Knox Road. Committee continues to work on a plan for updating the town tree inventory and is considering iTree as the platform to do that. There's a diseased Norway spruce on London Avenue in front of the middle school. And Cody Hayes on the committee is a certified arborist, is going to be assessing that once the weather improves, hopefully not too much longer from today and it's supposed to rain for forever. And then a landscaping proposal for the new rec park west access point will be submitted to the rec park board for approval, planning is planned for this fall.
Okay, my, my question however, Jacob, how come number three's even in, in there? That's, that's in the village.
We're consulting with the village ring.
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend this meeting, so thanks Linda.
Okay. CAC.
Yep, so the CAC report for January has a few things to look forward to specifically around Earth Day, which is going to be Saturday, April sixth. So there's going to be a few events that are happening on that day, including Repair Cafe and Electronic Waste Day. The Repair Cafe will be from ten to one, it's free. It's an opportunity to bring broken but beloved items to the community center for repair. There's a number of coat, repair coaches that are there who, you know, help assist. With respect to the Repair Cafe, there's a recommendation to visit the, the CAC website before attending the event to see which coaches will be attending, so you don't bring something that you'd like to have repaired, but there's not somebody to help you with that. That website, if you go to the town website, it's under the committees, you'll be able to find the CAC there and there's a specific page for that. In addition to that, there's going to be an e-waste day. Preferring that people bring those between ten and one, similarly, similar to the timing of the Repair Cafe. But the recycling center will be open from seven thirty to one, they'll be available then, but we prefer it comes between ten and one. And just like the Repair Cafe, there's going to be information on the CAC part of the website about what can be accepted at e-waste day. Most items are going to be free, but there might be a small cost for some items. If you have refrigerants, like small refrigerators, dehumidifiers, window AC units, you can bring those to the shed at the rear of the recycle building or recycle center. Again, I think, I don't know if the last time we talked about this, but the community compost program has been extended and has been continuing since the pilot program. There are six bins that are located over in the recycling center. Can bring food scraps, that includes meat and bones and those can go into there. And those get turned into compost instead of going into the landfill. There are stickers that are available for anyone who signs up for the mailing list, so you can get those at the recycle center. Recycling remains free at the recycle center, pay for bag for trash. And then like we talked about earlier, there are two scholarships for Red Oak students interested in the environment outdoors for summer camp. CAC website again has the application, more details, and those are sponsored by VFW and the Muson Lodge. So that's everything you can see as of this report.
Terrific. Thank you. Oh, and I think there's already been a tentative date set aside for our next Drive Electric event.
Great.
We had really good turnout despite the fact that it was raining once again. We had great turnout that day. It's looking like April thirteenth for the following weekend for that. Hopefully we'll have a nice moderate, warm day of weather. If you recall, the very first one, we had a twenty nineteen and it was, the last time was over a hundred degrees.
It was hot. I walked from bar to that in the village parking lot and it was.
There was a mister out there in the village parking lot, along with a bouncy.
Yeah, it was a really great event, but it was very hot.
Yeah, it was.
It's because I'm in the middle, like something overcast and it's too hot.
It's just, it's never, but, nothing in moderation, right, isn't that the expression? Okay, that's all great news. What else do we have?
Go to zone.
Maybe gave all of that, you're brief, thank you for telling us how many eggs were.
Hatched.
I'm sorry, I didn't think that's important.
I don't know, I feel like we need to get over it.
I mean.
It seems like single digits, what are we doing, like?
You know, people are volunteering to do these things. We have to thank them and put the information out there.
Kicked out by the house sparrows this time, so I, I thought it was very good.
Do we have a Nest cam, maybe you could show us some video? Yeah.
I'm sure they're happy to put that out there.
Uh huh, please, 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 please. Where are we?
Keep going, right?
There we go, okay, so there we go. Building and zoning and this is for the entire year. Boy, what a busy year.
It was very good.
It just continues to, to, to be a busy year. It just continues to, to, to be a busy year.
Yes, and I went back to try to look at last year's report and I pulled up from January's meeting, February's meeting, it was, it was in the March meeting and that particular file wouldn't open on my computer.
Because it was so big.
Because it was so big. But I do know just from memory that this number, these numbers are substantially better than they were in 2022.
Now, the revenue is a little skewed because it was an enormous payment by Bard College.
By College, yes.
Those buildings that they're great, but it speaks to the level of growth in the community and also in the department and, you know, we appreciate that, you know, they've been so responsive to getting out there and reviewing plans and doing inspections and all those.
Yeah, they do, and a number of permits, sometimes on a single project require multiple different permits and they come in succession, sometimes you're going consecutively, sometimes concurrently, but still, nine hundred and sixty-eight inspections is a lot. And then the complaints, you know, I spoke to the department about that, you know, it's like an average of two a month. Those are, they have to go out and look. So if someone calls in and says, you know, my neighbor's putting up a garage.
Neighbor's in there.
You know, a lot of that neighbor's saying that I didn't do this, they didn't do that. They have to go out, they have to look, they have to look and see what the one was filed. Sometimes they did, it's just not, you know, it's not out. Other times they have to go and stop work and, and work with the resident to get it cleared up. So they're very busy.
Well, on that note, we did have a retirement in that office, Bob Fennell retired after, hmm, well, let's just say, four decades.
Yeah.
Working here and we really appreciate the quality of his efforts, his institutional knowledge. And he worked in other municipalities as well, had a building background himself, so he understood both the trade and really had a great knowledge for zoning and as a zoning enforcement officer.
An important mentor.
Yeah, for sure.
For our new building inspector and some, been really a high-quality mentor and cared a lot about bringing him on and getting him up to speed, so played a very important role.
Yeah, we thank him very much for all this year's of service here.
Yes, it's a demanding job.
It's very, they're very busy.
I mean, that's, that's eighty-something inspections a month.
Yep, that's a lot.
Yeah, sometimes they go fast.
Yeah, I'm sure they're not, you know, spread out evenly.
Oh, no, 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 no. I mean, I, you know, I had a chimney put in and rest in peace, Sam Harkins did the inspection, but I remember him coming to my house and telling me that I was like the eleventh that day and he had three more to go. It was three thirty in the afternoon or whatever. So they, you know, they, they're out there putting miles on the car and getting it done.
You're sort of the split up, you know, the fees, you know, that's why the commercial members, I think.
They're big.
Part of college, I'm not sure that commercials necessarily. Okay, justice courts, I can't, I can't talk about justice courts anymore. Who would like to cover this one? Report, Jacob?
No, I covered my notes.
What's that?
He said not me.
Just annual report of the number of cases, the different types, the, the amount of revenue that was brought in. A good ticket update, yeah, and that was for Judge Treeblosser. And we did have words at our last meeting thanking for Jonah for so many years of service. Just a wonderful justice and human being. Okay, so that's the twenty twenty-three annual report. We also have one from Judge Mansfield. Number of pieces, various types. Those are all our reports. Wow, very good. And the last item we have is that task order on the 3D scan. Folks, we want to move forward with that?
Yes.
Okay.
If you look at the hourly charges that you can get from Diamond Bond or an architect or anybody else to come out, this will pay for itself.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep moving forward, make that building safe and start to.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, you're, you're about to do it.
I am, I'll make a motion. Undertake the 3D scan, I say, Mark.
Thank you, just the building.
Yeah, the interior.
Not the workers in it. Okay, I would second that. All in favor? Julia?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
See how long it would take before we jump in. Last, before we go, I sent you, there are a couple of, this relates to recycling. Okay, as we all know, the landscape in recycling of plastics has changed dramatically over the years. You know, the Chinese used to buy plastics and, and reuse them. That is no longer happening. The cost of recycling has, of those has gone up dramatically. There are two pieces of legislation about Albany. I sent you the information on that. One relates to, you know, holding the producers of the plastics accountable and having them participate in, you know, recycling and trying to keep down the amount. Because really, at the end of the day, prevention is often the key. The other is the expansion, something I know pretty well, having lobbied up at Albany for. Yet another expansion of the bottle bill. As you recall, there's that nickel redemption, which by the way, also was forty-plus years ago. It's amazing. That nickel hasn't been adjusted, so there's, you know, some language in there about adjusting that for inflation because the cost of the operating those redemption centers has not gone down in forty years. It's gone up, obviously, as everything else has, so there's some adjustment there as well. An expansion of, you know, what would be covered by the redemption as well as, you know, folks' habits change. Initially, it was just soda, soda bottles, remember that? And then there were all those artisanal water, we'll call them. And now we're, you know, they're looking at things like, you know, just even alcoholic bottles and stuff like that.
Yeah, basic wine bottles and chicken juices.
Right, and, and again, they look to the data to show if there's a, if there's a nickel or six cents or whatever associated with it, the likelihood of it being, you know, dealt with properly goes up dramatically. So those two bills, you know, if, if okay with you, I'd like to put up a resolution on our next meeting to support those bills in the current session in Albany. We pay for, for folks at home. It's free to you to use the recycling center. It's important. We've changed that policy. It's the people's property. We want it free to the people. There are costs associated, obviously, with hauling and the haulage fees from those companies has gone up rather dramatically over the last several years. So we, we also want to make sure that, you know, the taxpayers aren't necessarily footing the bill for what really those manufacturers are making money off of, so. All right, that's all we have for the business for tonight, but unfortunately for you, I will be making a, a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the matter under negotiation. And before we take that motion, I would like to thank everyone. Miranda, thank you, welcome. For the folks at home, the Panda TV app is now live. We want to remind you that. And you should be able to see these meetings again very soon back on Spectrum Cable, local channel. So goodnight, everyone. Stay healthy, be safe out there. Lisa?
I have a question.
Sure.
I didn't know when I was supposed to speak, so I'm going to do it now.
Oh.
I didn't hear anything about the property that is going to be, or supposedly be purchased down the eighty-two acres down by Bard College while the Unification Church. So I would like to know what is going on with that right now and is it still in the works? And why do we need eighty-two acres when we have Poets Walk, Fern Cliff Forest, Tibbely Bays, Claremont? I can go down to the River in Barrytown, I can go to Reincliffe. And why is the town spending 1.5 million to purchase that property?
Thank you, Lisa. So I would encourage you to, you can go online, you can see it, our previous meeting, one or two meetings ago, we had extensive discussion about it. Again, I would remind you and everyone at home, please sign up for notifications. Then you would have been able to hear and participate in the discussion and that question was already asked and answered. And maybe you can review the, the tapes there as well, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you all very much. Goodnight. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session.